All righty. Good morning, Commissioners, and over to you, Chair Harrington.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, April 15th, 2025, Washington County Board of Commissioners' Regular Business Meeting. Clerk Moss, could you do us the honors, please?
Certainly, Chair Harrington. The Washington County Board of Commissioners also meeting as the Board of Directors for Clean Water Services and all other county service districts is meeting in this regular session, April 15th, 2025. Commissioner Snyder?
Here.
Commissioner Fai?
Present.
Commissioner Willie?
Here.
Vice Chair Trees?
Here.
Chair Harrington?
Here. All please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. We have taken Item 10 off the Consent Agenda and will consider that for action before the public hearings. So that leaves us with 10 items on today's Consent Agenda. But first, we have public communication. This is an opportunity for members of our community to come and speak to the Board about any topic they would like for up to two minutes an individual. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to do so?
We do. Chair Harrington, we have Sandra Nelson, followed by Dale Feek.
Dale says we're a team. Good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. I'm Sandra Nelson, a resident of Washington County. God cares about every aspect of our lives. He cares about how taxpayer funds are used or misused. He cares about whether our elections are accurate, transparent, and valid. There is a right and wrong, and it doesn't depend on whether we're found out or not. God defines what is right and wrong, not people who can rationalize any behavior. About 230 years ago, John Adams, our second president, wrote, "Our Constitution was made only for a moral and religious people. It is wholly inadequate to the government of any other." Unquote. Nearly 200 years ago, Alexis de Tocqueville, the famous French visitor to America, observed, quote, "I am certain that Americans hold their religion to be indispensable to the maintenance of republican institutions. This opinion is not particular or peculiar to a class of citizens or to a party, but it belongs to the whole nation and to every rank of society." Unquote. At the same time, the Reverend Charles Finney warned, quote, "It seems sometimes as if the foundations of the nation are becoming rotten, and Christians seem to act as if they think God does not see what they do in politics. But I tell you, he does see, and he will bless or curse this nation according to the course Christians take in politics." The fact is, many Christians have been absent in politics for many years, and we are suffering the consequences. So we all stand guilty before a just God. But God is also merciful. Father in heaven, you showed both your justice and your mercy in the life, death, and resurrection of your Son Jesus. We confess our need for your forgiveness. Please forgive us and change us. In Jesus' name, amen. Thank you.
Madam Chair Harrington, Commissioners, I'm Dale Feek, Chair of the Washington County Citizen Action Network. And Kevin has given you now what I'd like to have you follow along with my public comment. I sent you an email, which is a little bit more detailed, but this talks about the local emergency Washington County Committee. And I was involved in helping get that developed. The plan started in 2015. We finally got bylaws in 2022. So, and I ask you to read four documents and attachments, and you have that. So, and you will learn certain things by reading those four attachments. Please do that. Scott Porter and I worked together early on in 2015 to get the local emergency planning committees done. And we decided early when we first met, as we said, "As a community, we have failed to fully implement the intent of the emergency planning community right to know law well. Scott and I, Dale Feek, are working to get it implemented." And we did that, primarily because of Scott, but I was impetuous to have it happen, okay? So, and then I'm also an official member of the Washington County Local Emergency Committee meeting, and I did go to a state conference with the Chair of that, Olar. He worked for Lam Research, and we did that. So I'm pretty knowledgeable about it. So please do read the list of people in Washington, the corporations in Washington County that have site-specific plans. There are 41 of them that have been developed. I am requesting, at the bottom, it says, "Local Emergency Planning Committee", what is it, and why was it foreign? Please get that out to the public. Who is on the committee? Who are the officers? Who in the county should get contact? When is the next meeting? And the schedule of meetings? How can residents get access to the site-specific emergency plans for the current 41 facilities who have written plans? And what are the names of the facilities, and where are they located? Please act on that as a county. Thank you very much.
All right. Would any other member in the auditorium, which should probably comment at this time for up to two minutes on any county-related topic, and just state your name for the record when you get to the microphone?
Hello, my name is Callie Peters. Thank you, Madam Harrington and Commissioners of the Board. This is my first time attending a county commissioner meeting. I am driven to attend these meetings because I am disappointed with the direction of our nation and our county as a whole. In high school, I was on the Constitution Team, and I studied the founding documents of our United States Constitution. We are meant to be a state that is separate from religion. I fear that President Donald Trump has gained a follower among those who state they are Christians when he is a false idol. Saying that you are a Christian does not mean that you're a good person. Being a good person is providing services to all, respect for all, regardless of your skin color, your religion, your income. Thank you.
All right. Not seeing any others in the room. Would any member online, which should provide public comment via Zoom for up to two minutes, give you just a moment to utilize the raise hand function? Not seeing any hands. Chair Harrington?
Thank you, Clerk Moss. Next, we'll move on to today's Consent Agenda, which consists of 10 items. One set of minutes, one item from Clean Water Services, one item from Assessment and Taxation, one from the District Attorney's Office, two from Facilities, Fleet, and Parks, one from Human Resources, and three from Land Use and Transportation. What are the wishes of the Commission?
Love to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the Consent Agenda, please vote by raising your hand. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Next, we'll move on to presentations. And do we have folks here to present the Metro SHS Annual Report? Welcome, Yasmin. Who's kicking ass off?
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Jess Larson. Pleasure to be here today as your Assistant Director, introducing our team from Metro and the Oversight Committee to provide you an update on the Supportive Housing Services Regional Report from Fiscal Year 2324. So this is a Program Year Three report, looking back on the outcomes and performance of our regional system under Supportive Housing Services investments in year three. And as you know, much of these learnings and the takeaways from our work in year three are already being incorporated into our programmatic work in year four and planning ahead for year five. But this is an important opportunity to look back, get this compiled regional information, and continue forward in our continuous improvement together. So I want to thank Yasenia and the team at Metro for compiling this report, and especially thank our two colleagues here, Felicita Montemblanco, who was a founding member of our Oversight Committee and has been here for the long haul of this work, and also Mike Savara, who joined the work and is now a co-chair of the body, helping to continue, see it forward. So thank you to you both, and I'll turn it over to Yasenia to begin the presentation.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Yasenia Delgado. I use she/her pronouns, and I'm the SHS Manager at Metro. I'm really excited to be here today, as Jess shared, to give an overview and a presentation of the Fiscal Year 24 Regional Supportive Housing Services Report. So as you all know, the Supportive Housing Services passed a few years ago with the vision to implement a regional system of care in partnership with Multnomah, Clackamas, and Washington County. And today, we're going to give you an update on how that work is going, and also share some other additional insights that we have for you. One of the requirements of the SHS via the different requirements that we have is that counties submit what we call an annual report for the previous fiscal year every year to Metro staff and the Oversight Housing Committee. This report is a compilation that shares how funds were spent, their priority populations that they're serving. It also includes their efforts that they've made, that the counties have made in terms of building a regional system of care, and also provides an overview of their work plan goals and how they're working on things in alignment with the requirements and the regional goals set forth in the Metro SHS Work Plan. Once we receive those reports from the three counties, we support the Oversight Committee in analyzing those and reviewing them in compliance for the requirements set forth for the 10-year goals. And then the Oversight Committee drafts what we call this Regional Report. And this Regional Report is really an analysis of the county's performance from the previous years, highlights the successes, but also challenges that might have happened, and some opportunities that get documented via recommendations to improve oversight and accountability for the next year. So the Oversight Committee members have joined me, and we presented a Metro Council last month. The Metro Council then approved these recommendations that you'll hear a little bit more about today. And then we've really started on this roadshow across the three different county commissioners to give an overview of the presentation and the recommendations that we have. So I'm really excited. The presentation today will be led by co-chair Mike Savara and Felicita, and you'll get to hear more about how SHS is truly changing the trajectory of people's lives, and all while continuing to build this incredible regional system of care. So much gratitude to both of them, and I will pass it over to Felicita to get us started.
Again, for the record, Felicita Montemblanco, longtime committee member, longtime Washington County resident. So today, we'll do a review of the who and what of SHS, and we all are aware of the why, a homelessness crisis across the region deeply impacting our neighbors. We will review the third year's progress and highlights, as well as here are our recommendations. There is so much work to celebrate. Lives have been transformed, and of course, there is room for improvement. It is our intention to keep the presentation quick and make more time for question and discussion at the end, so please hold your questions until we wrap up. The SHS Oversight Committee plays a key regional role in the implementation of this measure. The Committee's roles and responsibilities include fiscal oversight and recommendations to Metro Council regarding the local implementation plans. On behalf of Metro Council, the Committee provides independent program oversight and ensures accountability to taxpayers, service participants, and our regional community. The Committee is made up of 15 leaders with diverse experiences and expertise, including experience with housing instability and homelessness. One primary way the Committee carries out its role is to accept and review county annual reports and then prepare a regional annual report that assesses overall performance, challenges, and outcomes for the program year. As Yasenia mentioned, this is the last of our jurisdictional tours, and over the last month and a half, we've presented to the counties and Metro Council. The Washington County Board of Commissioners is steeped in the work and familiar with the regional goals. We want to reduce barriers, connect at least 5,000 households to PSH, and stabilize at least 10,000 households at risk of or experiencing homelessness. And as you know, these regional goals are a floor, not a ceiling, and we have made significant progress toward them as we ended year three. In addition to the 10-year goals, there are additional SHS goals as part of the SHS Work Plan. Year three of SHS is the first time we've had enough information to communicate our progress of the SHS Work Plan goals. Unfortunately, we won't have time to review these today, but you can get more information in our report. A few highlights from Fiscal Year 2024. First, the growing pains of the first few years of implementation have been largely overcome. Starting programs from scratch and increasing capacity across the region is no small feat. Second, counties contracted with 103 providers, including 19 culturally specific organizations, to deliver SHS services in year three. Third, all three counties made improvements to contract administration practices to reduce invoice processing. And finally, the Tri-County Planning Body, or TCPB, worked with Metro, the counties, and other partners in year three to develop implementation strategies for their six regional goals that included regional landlord recruitment and healthcare system alignment. These graphs you see are a representation of the SHS regional goals versus performance for year three based on data received from the counties. And I will walk you through each of these bar graphs, but let's start with the fact that we have made progress in how we track the 5K and 10K goals. And while happy with that progress, there is room to improve in how we report toward those goals. The gray represents the goal. The dark blue is what was achieved in year three. The first two graphs illustrate that the region was close to hitting its year-three goals of supportive housing, units brought into operation, and getting households placed into units. Reminder that the 1,220 units of permanent supportive housing helped us get to the 4,055 total units that have been created over three years. Once all of these over 4,000 units are fully leased up, they will represent a significant portion of SHS's 10-year goal of connecting 5,000 households experiencing prolonged homelessness with permanent supportive housing. The other five graphs highlight areas where the region has met or far exceeded year-three goals. This includes households being rapidly rehoused, households receiving support to prevent homelessness, and the number of shelter beds created. The insert highlights retention of these families and individuals, or the percentage of households that stay. These numbers are great. We want these households stable. Sincerest congratulations to the counties, to everyone in the county, our service providers, the staff, and of course, all of you, our Commissioners.
Thank you so much, Felicita. And for the record, my name is Mike Savara. It's good to see you all again, Chair, Commission. I am a Washington County resident, and I'm one of the co-chairs of the Supportive Housing Services Oversight Committee. So we're going to keep running through some more information. This slide you see here is really diving into the revenue collection. This is obviously not something that you probably are unfamiliar with. This has been a big topic of conversation over the past year. Really, we see here that the revenue collection and distribution has amounted to over $399.8 million during that fiscal year, almost $350 million in prior year carryover, plus other revenues, interests, grants, and miscellaneous other sources of revenue. So we really see this as a strong start, you know, prompting that increase in the forecasted revenue. But then 2324 collections were slightly lower than the prior year. So we're starting to see a leveling off effect in some of the revenue. And so this is definitely something that's caused a lot of the county's responses, Metro's responses, to really figure out and have deep conversations about the priorities for the next few years, something, again, you're not very unfamiliar with. Let me go to the next slide. So this is expenditures by program. So the way this is laid out, you can see the different colors represent the different counties' expenditures in each of the areas. So whether it's shelter or short-term housing assistance, permanent housing services, infrastructure, these dollars are investing in a whole system of care. This is a really important aspect of Supportive Housing Services program. It's not just meant to support one aspect of the system, increasing shelters or providing permanent housing. It really is meant to be that supportive backbone for so many of the key goals that, as we build out this system. And I think a really important note on this is that often, this isn't the only revenue or only aspect of investment in the Supportive Housing Services, or in the homeless services system within each of the counties. You all are often balancing other sources of state or federal or local funds as you're trying to make the hard decisions about what to prioritize and where it goes. I think this is a really helpful notion of just like, where is the dollars going as we're seeking to build out the system? And then as we're having to have more conversations, we'll get into some of the recommendations about prioritization. You all have already had to make some really hard decisions in the upcoming budget year about where you prioritize scarce resources, and I think this is a really important data point to look at as you're thinking about how to balance those. Just diving into kind of the specific county performance for Washington County, you can see here, this is a similar slide, but really just zoomed in on Washington County's results for this last fiscal year. You can see that Washington County met or exceeded more than half of the regional housing metric goals included in its annual work plan, and achieved almost all of the goals related to racial equity, capacity building, and other local implementation plan priorities. This is a huge success. I think, you know, I want to kind of just pause here. You all have an amazing team of leaders that are helping to make the hard decisions and build out this system from essentially scratch. So being able to see these kinds of results even three years after the implementation of the measure is a big deal. You know, I work in my day job at the State of Oregon, and, you know, we're constantly seeing, as communities are grappling with the crisis of housing, crisis of homelessness, it takes time to build out these systems. It takes time to build the muscles necessary to sort of get to these levels of results. So this rapid increase in investment, you are seeing some really key results across the system. So I think it's just a really important notion that the providers, the staff, everyone across the system are really making headway on solving so many experiences of homelessness, and we have more work to do. There's more folks experiencing homelessness that are falling into homelessness every single day because rents are too high, incomes aren't keeping up with inflation, and we need to find other supports for our community members across the county. Oh, thanks so much. Just in diving into some of the challenges, you know, kind of building off of those, these are some of the challenges that the Oversight Committee has really recognized. And so, you know, none of these are going to be surprises. Growing need. I think one really interesting and somewhat terrifying data point that we saw was that across the region, utilizing Built for Zero data, every 10 households that exited homelessness, so they got rehoused, they got supportive services, and entered into permanent housing in year three, 15 new households entered into the system. So that inflow and outflow is not necessarily balanced in terms of the rate of people falling into the experience of homelessness or interacting with our system. It's not necessarily balanced with the rate of folks that were able to exit from the system. That isn't necessarily a reflection of the performance of the system. It's a reflection of the stark economic circumstances that drive people to experience homelessness in the first place. And I think it really helps us to level set about the performance and what folks are seeing out through their windshields isn't always reflective of what we would want to see, of course. But it's also something that this system is grappling with much larger consequences of how the housing system, how the economic health and vitality of our region are playing out. So again, competing priorities are another challenge. You know, as we start to build out the system, we have to think about whether or not we build or invest in transitional housing or a shelter, or do we add another ARLA voucher to increase the number of people utilizing a permanent supportive housing program? Those types of balancing decisions are constantly happening, both at your level as well as at the staff level. And I think it's just an important note that we need to keep thinking about what we as a region need. And I know there's ongoing conversations about exactly how we can build a regional system of care that really seeks to balance all the various competing priorities, as well as building out county-specific plans and strategies. I think another area that we've seen is just financial oversight. This is a really big area for not just our region, but also for our industry. The ability to grow a system also comes with expectations that we manage public resources really well and that we are good stewards of those public dollars. That oversight comes in a variety of flavors, right? It means that we have to make sure that the nonprofits that are doing the hard work every single day have the capacity they need to manage the resources, manage the staff, manage the sophistication necessary to build up those systems, as well as at the regional oversight level. I think some of the things that we've seen is that our ability to understand what's happening in real time as a committee was sometimes hampered just because we didn't have all the information, we didn't have the data that we needed to make the analysis. So those are really recommendations you'll see in our report that are kind of helping to build out, how do we actually have better oversight and stewardship of the resources? We're making great progress, and we just need to make sure that we build out those other systems that aren't often the thing that you think about when you build a homeless services system. And then regional evaluation is this last challenge. I think this is really where, in order for us to understand what's working, where do we invest our resources? Do we build that shelter, or do we invest in permanent housing? We have to have the analysis of what's the impact. So understanding if a program isn't effective, or isn't working, or isn't working for specific populations, how do we modify those programs or investments to make them more effective? And that's really where evaluation of our impact is going to be key, both at the county level as well as at the regional level. All right. So we're going to move into a little bit more on some of our key recommendations. I'm going to do a couple, and then I will pass to Felicita for rounding us out. So this first one is really, you know, again, a theme you're going to hear again and again is talking about and digging into what our regional priorities are. This is bringing together stakeholders from diverse opinions, backgrounds, making sure that we're having the hard conversations as a region about where we need to invest and where our system is lagging or where it is performing well. And really, this is a conversation that I think has been playing out much this year. We've been seeing many different tables and conversations about stakeholders that have been able to help articulate what the vision is for this work. And I think that's a really important piece, because if we don't have a vision for where this work is going, we're going to keep floundering with not being able to understand the direction, the navigating to that end result. And I think that vision happens at a variety of levels. It's both at the regional level, but it's also at organizations and at county levels. And so really adopting shared agreements helped to drive towards those huge priorities that we have. The next one is really around oversight and accountability. So, you know, as the regional oversight body kind of tasked with understanding where the resources are going, understanding what's happening, you know, we've seen some areas for improvement. I think this is definitely connected to things like monitoring, evaluation, reviewing compliance for the program, making sure that we have good, solid data that we can base decisions upon. Those are the mechanisms that we need to make sure we have, as well as things like making sure that if things do go astray from the vision of this measure and what the voters expected, that we have the mechanisms in place to ensure accountability is happening. So making sure that those are part of the agreed-upon sort of ground-level work for the system as a whole. I think this is an important note that when we talk about oversight and accountability, it's not necessarily because service providers aren't doing the amazing work. They're not succeeding in all the ways that they are. It's because we need to have the visibility and transparency for the investments of these resources. And I think that's a really important distinction, that we're not asking for more oversight and accountability because of massive levels of failure across the system. We're actually wanting to improve and wanting to build upon where this oversight and accountability work goes, because we are seeing success, and we need to make sure that we continue to see that success and have visibility and transparency on what's happening. I will pass to Felicita to round us out. Oh, actually, I have one more. Never mind. My slide deck is moving too fast for me. So this last one is jurisdictional partnerships and decision-making. So, you know, as we built out this system, I think this was a really important note of how do the counties, the jurisdictions that are implementing, and Metro make decisions together? This is something that we've seen time and time again. It takes trust. It takes the ability to have conversations at varieties of levels, both at the elected levels and at staff levels, to be able to have the conversations about when expectations aren't being met, or when partnerships need to be developed further. I think this is really about clarity at the end of the day. Many of us want to see on the Oversight Committee more clarity about what our role is as an oversight body, but also about how the different decision levels across the system actually work. So when a decision about a budget change needs to be made, let's get clear on exactly when and how the process works to make budget changes for the counties or at the regional level. I think these are types of decisions that we really want to dig into, and ultimately, that's going to take those tough conversations with leaders across the region to talk about what's working for them, what's working for their constituents, and really to build out this system. So just really focusing this on how do we actually make decisions? How do we get the work done? And how do we do this in a way that's focused on trust-building and focused on relationship? I think this is a big part of where we need to go in order to have an effective system for the remaining years of this measure, and also to show that voters that we are focused, as a region, on accomplishing the mission that they've set out for us. All right. With that, I will pass to- All right, with that, I will pass to Felicity.
Our next recommendation is focus on data integrity and evaluation. Providing transparency and accountability to voters requires regionally consistent data. Metro and counties should work collaboratively and with urgency to continue to align financial and programmatic data reporting. This includes addressing the challenges, preventing consistent reporting on the population A and financial split. Our next recommendation centers provider partnerships. The region's nonprofit and community-based organizations are the backbone of the SHS Fund's success. SHS jurisdictional partners and the Tri-County Planning Body should work to advance critical strategies that will support the capacity and stability of these organizations with a particular focus on small, emerging, and culturally specific providers. And last slide, I'm going to end on a story. So many lives have been transformed by SHS, including those pictured. We wanted to end our presentation on a story from someone you don't see here but a new Washington County neighbor. Nicole is a survivor of domestic violence and human trafficking from a young age. Originally from Eugene, she came to Portland with some friends who left her stranded. She stayed at a women's shelter for about three months before connecting with Washington County's SHS-funded Rapid Rehousing Program. From there, it was only a week before getting her first call from her caseworker, Amanda, with the Urban League and moving into her new home in Beaverton. At age 34, Nicole is living alone for the first time in her life. It means more than life itself, she explained. This program has done more for me than people will ever know. The apartment is more peaceful than other places she's lived, many of which weren't in a good neighborhood or environment. The apartment window looks out onto a little creek, and Nicole finds the water relaxing. Home finally feels like a sanctuary. Once I close the door, everything is out there, is out there, and it's not in here. Amanda helps with necessities like furniture and food boxes, along with providing support and encouragement. It's easy to feel like a statistic, but Amanda makes me more than a statistic. She makes me feel like a success story, and she goes above and beyond to do so. Now that Nicole has a safe, stable place to live, she's able to process and heal from a lifetime of trauma and living in survival mode. She plans to go back to school and ultimately would like to start a nonprofit to help other people who have experienced domestic violence and human trafficking. She wants to provide hope and a way out. She wants to be a light, like Amanda has been for her. Stories like Nicole's demonstrate the transformative potential of our region's commitment to invest in services that help people exit homelessness and transition into stable housing. Thank you so much for your time, and we're happy to take questions.
Thank you very much. Before I turn the mic over to my colleagues, I just want to give an overview, and then I'll ask my questions last. The SHS Oversight Committee members are volunteers from across all three counties, as are many of the members of the Tri-County Planning Body. They bring their expertise in, they meet on a regular basis, they analyze all kinds of reports from the three different counties and try to coalesce around areas where they believe further attention and progress needs to be made. So I want to make sure, one takeaway that you get from being before us today and sharing the year-three report, which includes recommendations, is a big thank you for investing the time and the energy to do this work, because I don't know that you're thanked enough for all of that time and that rigor and that hope. So I just wanted to put that out there. And with that, there are five of us who have questions. So would you like to start, Commissioner Willie, and then we'll go to the right, and then we'll come back to the left?
Great. I always, I appreciate these presentations because data and information on results is certainly important. Could you go back to Slide 9, please? Slide 9 is...
Your data, right?
Yeah, showing the Rent Assistance Program, and that I've always appreciated that program, and it's certainly the financial support that we do, to particularly two of our nonprofits that oversee that for us. So when I see a statistic like homeless prevention's households, and we had triple the demand that we budgeted, and I know that in this upcoming year, we have actually reduced the funding for this, so I'm saying if we really, as you said, that the demand is, for every 10 that's going out, 15 are coming in, with that demand showing that much of an increase in needing that support, why are we reducing the funding for that part of our program? That's probably a Jess question?
Okay, I'll jump in. Thank you, Commissioner, for the question. The resources we've been able to use for the first, sorry, for year program, year two and three for homeless preventions were made up of one-time funds that were in addition or to the annual programming needs of supporting the ongoing systems that we've built. So we were able to take one-time funds and put them where we knew they would go to good use, especially staving off the reductions from federal funding during COVID for eviction preventions. So we were able to sort of hold steady that level of investment, or I think maybe help it hold close to that era's level of investment in homeless prevention, pardon me, eviction preventions. And eviction preventions is a slightly different approach than homeless preventions, and so what we're working on doing in program year five, now that we are fully out of, we have fully expended those one-time resources, is making sure we dial in our prevention resources to specifically serve those households most at risk of homelessness. So it will look like a lower level of investment, because that is frankly the resource that we have available to commit to this need, but the goal is to really target these investments where they're needed most to prevent people from falling into homelessness. And simultaneously, we'll be continuing to join arms with our partners to advocate for those anti-poverty resources at that state level for broader eviction prevention funding. So I hope that's a helpful answer.
Well, then, with that, what is your year-four goal in the number of households? Have we established that yet?
That was two weeks ago, our presentation.
Okay, I forgot. Refresh my memory.
I'm sorry, Commissioner. I don't think I can refresh your memory, because I don't have the information off the top of my head, but I will make sure our team gets it to you. One caveat to that is we are retooling this program, because we've reduced resources, and we need to target the resources strategically, and we're not going to be able to launch that program at the beginning of the fiscal year, so we have to adjust our program year goal based on a partial year of implementation. So I think that the answer is we have a partial goal that we'll need to refine as we get clearer with our data, but I'll make sure the team gets an answer back to you.
I just, for me, this is a very important part of it. I mean, helping those who are already houseless is very important, but also preventing the next generation is important, too. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. Good afternoon, or good morning, it's still a morning. I don't have a question or a Jess question, but I do have a gratitude comment. I want to thank the outside presenters, including you, Jess, as well, inside and outside. Thank you for joining us this morning, and thank you for your presentation. This was a very well-done presentation, and I really appreciate this slide, you know, sort of centering Washington County and our performance. We intentionally, you know, do this work, not with ourselves alone, but we do it with the community, and we do it with partners, and we're thoughtful in how we approach eradicating homelessness, and you see the performance. So I'm really in a celebratory mode this morning to celebrate our collective success. And to the presenters, especially to Felicity and Mike, both of your intelligence, as well as you, Yizini, why am I leaving you out? You started off, you started this whole presentation, but you're metro, so I'm going to focus on the volunteers here. No pun intended, without comment. But Felicity and Mike, thank you for your presentation. What I took away from your presentation, besides the, you know, what was on the slide, is what really came through for me is your commitment and your passion and your intelligence in this topic. So thank you for all your volunteerism that you do. You are making a difference, and we're on this journey. So thank you.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. I echo the comments. Thank you very much for your commitment and your dedication to this. I have a couple clarifying questions and one opinion question. So with that, I'd like to start with Slide, I believe it's Slide 5, and you mentioned that the county's contracted with 103 providers, including 19 culturally specific organizations. Doesn't have to happen now, but I'd like to see a breakdown for each county of those. So that's something that I can ask of Jess, I believe, to provide. And the opinion question is really, your work is on an operational level. What's happened? What are the numbers? How have we instituted these? I think one of the challenges that we face as a region is how do we tell our story? Which is, the foundation is set here, but I'd like to hear your comments about how we can effectively tell this story. So as we move through the end of this 10-year cycle with the potential, as we're discussing right now, to go further, how do we tell the story from the standpoint that this is the good news that has happened without looking like we're not addressing the, for every 10 households we serve, we've got 15 more coming in? So would you like to comment on that, please?
So as someone who has served on the committee since day one, this is something I've been very vocal about, and I would say critical about. There is more that we can be doing. It is, it's a, it was part of our first regional report and our second, and a little piece of our third of just like, there is work to be done around communicating effectively the profound impact of this work. I think you're right in that this is a tricky balance of what people are experiencing day to day might not maybe match with our narrative. That being said, I think that we have barely touched the surface in telling these stories, and I want to be mindful of that capacity is always going to be an issue, but this is something that I would say that several members of the committee, including myself, have been vocal about.
Thank you.
Yeah, I totally agree with the story aspect. I think, you know, another element of this could also be the data that we use. So I think the fact that we are imminently about to secure, I believe, or have already secured data-sharing agreement between Metro and the... All right, signed and done in February, sorry. So that, the completion of that, I think enables us to start to have better analysis of actual numbers on a very regular basis, to not just, I mean, it's, you know, March, no, April, and we're talking about data from last year. I think that's obviously how the process of collecting data, talking about it, often happens. I noticed that people respond a bit differently when we're able to say, here, right now, this month, we were able to serve this many people, and have a bit more of a real-time conversation about the impacts that these resources are making. So I think there is work that is underway, that gets at the stories but also gets at the results, and building in that accountability, I think, is a really important piece in terms of like what voters expect for government to do. Like, they expect government to work effectively and to solve problems and to be pragmatic about what's happening, and to be good stewards. And so I think being able to have better analysis, better visibility on what's happening, are we meeting our goals? Did we meet the goals this year, this month, this quarter? Did we not? Why not? What's happening with that interplay, I think we'll be in a much stronger position. That's not to say we're not already doing a lot of that. I just think the more we can get the regional story around the data that's actually happening in a more real-time way, I think we'll be able to kind of infuse those storytelling aspects with the actual like results and outcomes and accountability data that we'll have.
Thank you. Did you have a comment?
I agree with both of them.
Okay, thank you very much.
Well, thank you. I want to comment a little bit on the storytelling aspect of the discussion here, just to start. I think one of the big challenges around that, and to Commissioner Treese's question, I know I wasn't asked to respond to it, but I'm going to. Like, I think part of the challenge is that the story's not the same in every county and jurisdiction. Like, what's happening on the ground, what the experience of people in the system are, and the experience of people that are not necessarily needing SHS support is wildly different. And I think that makes the storytelling really difficult, especially when you're trying to, you know, generally storytelling's effective when you can have a very clear message, and, you know, you've got some data that's clear, and you're trying to get a couple key points across. I think this is just more complicated than that, unfortunately. Like, the story is really like a lot of stories, not one, and so I just think that's challenging. I appreciate the review that you did. I really appreciated the Slide 8 data that's comparing spending in each of the counties, I believe, and then the slide not that, oh, sorry, keep going, that one right there. And then the results and expect, against our goals for Washington County were really helpful, and I appreciate that. It gets, it's important from an accountability standpoint, I think, for our whole organization. The other comment, I just want to thank you all for the thoughtful, I would say provoking comments or critique and questions that you put forward. I mean, these are not to answer today, but the things that you are keeping up at night that are making you think and worry are all the same things that I think we are as well, but it's good to see them in writing, thoughtfully prepared, and we still have a lot to, we as a region, regional leaders, our commission, other counties, Metro, all have a lot of work to do and continue to do. So thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. My question to the two of you to start off with is, what questions did the Metro Council ask you?
Oh, yeah, I did that presentation. The ones that I remember, there was a slide about administrative rates for service providers, and there was some questions about that. I want to quickly insert that we don't have rules about administrative rates in terms of the SHS, so I look back and I'm hard on myself on how I answered that question. There was also, Counselor Lewis sort of asked, like, what we, something about like, how do we, how do we make this all better? How do we, how do we make this, how do we make the committee better? Like, what are the things to improve there? And then Commissioner Gonzalez asked about, can we reach our goals? And I remember being very direct in saying that, by supporting our amazing nonprofits who are doing this critical work every day, I do believe we will reach our goals. That's what I remember. Dr. Taylor, the other co-chair, presented with me, and he's not here. What do you remember?
Yeah, I think that there was also like some questions and discussion had around the nature of the program, the 10-year goals, given that we are headed into year five. As Mike really eloquently described earlier, the growing need for these dollars, and given that we're continuing to see that need continue to rise, like, what is our strategy there? Which I think is all conversation that is being had at the Oversight Committee level. Yeah, I mean, that presentation was a little over a month ago, so I think that that, these are the themes that came up at that Metro Council meeting, followed by their agreement and recommendations and approval of them, to ensure that those recommendations that the Oversight Committee had and got to move forward.
Thank you. Next question. I had the opportunity to hear the Oversight Committee presentation at the Metro Supportive Housing Services Tri-County Planning Body Committee, and so, Mr. Savaro, I heard you outline... Mr. Savaro, I heard you outline that hard conversations need to occur to understand what's working and to focus on those. And my question is, how do you see those conversations happening?
Question, Chair Harrington. I think I see them happening at a couple different altitudes, if you will. So, I think, you know, we, we've been briefed on the Metro Council's President's Work Group that I think, I think you participate in amongst other, other commissioners and...
Committee Task Force Warned Out, I think.
I think that's fair. I think that's fair. So, I think that is obviously one altitude where conversations need to happen because having elected leaders, key, you know, kind of representatives of key stakeholder groups, business and nonprofit advocacy groups, I think those are really, really important. And I, I don't see that as the only level of conversation that needs to happen, though. I think, you know, in my conversations just across the region with nonprofits who are talk, you know, who are honestly facing the brunt of any potential changes in terms of like, are they going to lay staff off? Are they going to have enough money next fiscal year to pay all of the accountants they need? Are they going to have the, the assurance that they can actually do like, a five-year plan for their, their organization? I think those conversations are also really needed. And I'm not sure where that fits, other than probably at Tri-County Planning Body. I think it's a great space for more digging in around how nonprofits and service providers can get into it. And I also think, you know, our overall conversation about evaluating where, what's working and what's not working needs to be led by people that are using the services. So, we, we love hearing from nonprofits, and nonprofits don't always represent what service users, the people that are living in the shelters, living in the services, services that are supported, they don't always have the same opinions, you know? And I often think government, we, we get a little bit maybe lazy at times, and we think those two opinions might be the same thing. And I, I think that's an important element. I know the county has mechanisms to reach people that are using the services, to hear from them. I think that's a really important data point, that if we miss it, if we, if we miss how we can get qualitative information about people that are like, living in the shelters, to know, hey, what's it like? What's your experience? Are you getting the help you need? I think that's a really important element of, of any evaluation that I would definitely encourage you all and, and, you know, the county to really invest in. It takes time. It takes a lot of expertise. And it takes compensating people for their opinions and expertise as well. So, I think just a couple different altitudes might be needed. I will say, just the Oversight Committee, we've had some conversations about this, the changes, the needs, the, the strategies. And I've appreciated the time that we've been able to have. We also have a pretty tight and packed agenda, as you know, Chair. So, I think just the, the time we can spare for these high-level priority kind of vision conversations, I think are really valuable at that committee.
Well, I'll just say that for our solutions, for our Homeless Solutions Advisory Council, we have a whole lived experience subcommittee of the five different subcommittees to that council or committees to that council. But I have not seen that get any airtime or visibility through any of the SHS system, Oversight Committee, TCPB, or Metro Council. I just have a couple more points. This is to the, the two of you volunteers. Would you agree that Metro is the regional player, particularly as you described, regional storytelling? I mean, from day one with the SHS program, the three counties have been trying mightily to tell their story, all kinds of stories, all kinds of pieces, the human story, the data story, the reports story, the you-name-it story, the opening story, the groundbreaking story. And yet, we keep hearing more storytelling, more results, more accountability. And there is no way I am going to support our staff having to produce yet again another set of reports. So, somebody, somewhere can do the storytelling. It was my understanding for this program that Metro, the regional government, would actually do this part.
It's definitely my understanding as well, that Metro would take the lead on this. Something that's come up in our meetings was how do we empower the organizations to tell stories? I think, I, talking to over 600,000 people who all have different views and, well, that's just Washington County, our challenge is, is significant here, communicating to this many people who only use email or only read the paper. So, the, I'm mindful that there's no magic fix to this, and, you know, one more Facebook post won't, won't fix this. But I, Chair Harrington is someone who's been involved in this committee for a long time. I think you know that the committee has been vocal about, you know, Metro taking the lead on the storytelling piece. And, you know, I think they, they have an amazing website that highlights stories, which is wonderful, but what are the steps to getting those stories out? How do we empower our county partners and our service providers in one coherent system that gets the message out? I, it's heartbreaking, right? I tell you the story about Nicole. I want everyone to hear the story about Nicole and this amazing work that's happening with the, with the dollars the taxpayers are spending. And it's, it's hard to get the message out to the volume of people that we need to.
Well, I'll just say, in closing, the work of the service providers and our staff, not just here in Washington County, but across the three counties, is incredible. And it's making a difference in thousands of people's lives. But I believe pretty strongly, we don't have a regional partner in all of this. What I've been experiencing since October of 2023 is a lot of negativity from the Metro Council. So, if this is what regional progress or success feels like, it really sucks. And I think we've got to start making sure that we are being partners together in meeting this big human need that exists in our community. Because if we don't try to do this well, as in better, then people are just going to flounder. They're going to lose time in their lives, and they're the ones who have no time to waste, absolutely none. We can account for all of the money that we have spent, but for what benefit? You know, enough with the reports. Let's just try to be clear about what positive impact we're having, what we're trying to do, and keep going. Because eating one another's lunch is not helping those people at all. We've got to start being more gentle with one another to do this work, or call it quits, because it's just not worth the price of admission at this rate. So...
Tough on issues, not on people.
Yep, yep. So, you know, the voters approve division. And we've really stepped up to the plate and have done all kinds of things that our community was afraid of. But as we've built it, we have so many stories of people saying, wow, you delivered on what you said you were going to deliver, and it wasn't anything like what I feared and what I imagined. So, that's what I think keeps my colleagues not only brave, but patient. They have spent extraordinary time learning about what this program needs to do to serve our community. And they've been very brave in their decision-making. But they don't get, they don't deserve to be hammered for it. They deserve to be thanked as well with a keep going. We have a reason to keep going together, to make living circumstances better for the people of our community. And we can do it. So, we'll end on that happy note. Thank you very much for coming and presenting the Year Three Report. We're almost done with Year Four. We're in the final quarter of Year Four. We approved the amended work plan from our team and have approved the Year Five work plan as well. So, I hope Metro Council is taking note. Thank you. Next, we're going to move to action items. And there is an item that we're moving forward with here as a county related to transportation funding and investments in our communities. So, at this juncture, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Angie to invite her team up with regard to financing for major street transportation investment program.
Thank you, Chair Harrington, and thank you for your interest in moving this from consent to action today. I will turn it over to Assistant County Administrator Anne Ober and our interim Chief Financial Officer, John Steyer.
Hi, I'm Anne Ober. I'm one of the Assistant County Administrators. Anne?
I'm John Steyer. I'm the interim Chief Financial Officer.
And today you have on your agenda the approval of $150 million in bonds for MSTIP. And these are projects that you approved back in April of 2024. That I'm going to turn over to John, just to talk a little bit about what the bonding process looks like.
Thank you. So, the last time we did a bond measure in the Finance Department was probably 10 years ago. So, that hasn't been done for a while. Today, I will just talk a little about our consultant support that we have and a little bit about the timing of the project. So, if I could have the next slide?
Oops.
Back one.
There we go.
So, we have some really good consultants. We have a special bond counsel and also financial advisors that support the whole project. Hawkins, Stella Field, and Wood are special bond counsel. And we're working with them to, number one, develop the RNO that we have on the agenda today. And they provide guidance on the law, and we manage the, we manage the bond in accordance with what we can spend it on. We spend it in accordance with the timing that we have available. So, for the bond, we have to spend 85% of our proceeds within the first three years of the bond, those types of legal things that they provide guidance on. If they were to be a voter-approved bond, in which case this one is not, it's a full faith and credit. So, it's backed by the credit of the county. And that's one thing the financial advisor will help us with, is the fact that we have to go to the ratings board and make sure we have our ratings updated and validated. Piper Sandler, our financial advisor, so they will help with all the paperwork, look at different options for bonding timelines, and we take into account the amount of interest we would have on different time periods. Of course, a lower time period is less interest and better use of money for the county if we can make those payments in the payback time. Both have been very helpful in working through the process and guiding us in the work. I can go to the next slide. So, we're right, just, just a very abbreviated look at the steps in the process. It began, of course, in April with the issuance of the direction to, to do a bond for the MSTIP projects. And then, today, we're here for the resolution in order to actually issue the bonds. Then, the next step is the work begins on developing the preliminary official statement. So, it's a disclosure statement on the county's financials. A lot of work will go into that. Work from our annual consolidated financial plan will also be tied into that because we have to make sure our ratings are, are good and validated. That work will happen 12 May with the rating agency. 16 May, we'll have a disclosure draft that will be circulated to the board for information and review. And then, on 2 June, the final disclosure, post-disclosure document will be completed to allow the bid to begin on 12 June and closing by the end of the fiscal year. And that's the current timeline and process. Be open to any questions you might have.
Go ahead. I'll follow.
Well, I guess this is not directly a question, but just a comment that I think, I mean, I know I wasn't on the commission when the decision was made, but I do want to go on record and just say that I think in an environment where construction costs and inflationary pressures are significant and we can borrow money at a much lower rate than in, you know, those inflationary pressures, this is an extremely smart thing to be doing. I would be encouraging us to think about doing it more often, not less often, given the environment we're in. That's it.
Anyone else?
Yeah, just a quick one. Go ahead, Pam. Sorry, just put a piece of gum in. Well, in a spatial sense, there's two points to this that I'm really glad we're moving ahead on this. One is, we made a commitment a year ago that we would fund the projects that we no longer had money to fund from previous MSTIP projects, primarily because of construction costs went exponentially up. So, we're honoring that commitment that we made to the mayors, to the county for these programs. The second thing is, and once again, I just read this a couple days ago on a tax letter that I get, they're looking at eliminating the tax-free part of this, these bonds, which will again significantly increase the cost of the bonds to us and the projects, obviously, to follow. So, I think it's important that we be looking at this. And then, potentially, depending on where that goes, because this isn't the first time the federal government has considered this, we need to be looking at what our future bonding program may look like as well, to make sure that we can get underneath whatever timeline that the federal government's considering. So, thanks for doing this.
I, I just want to say as well, thank you for doing this. But I also want to thank my fellow commissioners for having the courage to take this step in, in moving forward. There's, there's always risk associated with these things. And I believe we're doing the right thing. I appreciate the, the support here in terms of how this timeline will unfold and what the process is. I also am hopeful that our partners in MSTIP understand all the complexities of what we're trying to do here to create, to, to ensure a robust MSTIP program, given our budget constraints. So, this is, these are our efforts to make sure we, we attend to the issues that MSTIP has and we follow through with our commitments. So, thank you for your work. All right, I'll go last. Part of what this bonding will accomplish, if folks go back to that April 16th of 2024 presentation, is you'll see that there's a backlog of projects under the name of MSTIP 3D and 3E, as well as some other projects that past boards had agreed to with local government partners to ensure for UGB expansion areas, for example, the needed county-wide infrastructure was put in place. So, this is really ketchup time in terms of transportation improvements. Worthy ketchup time, or ketchup projects. My question on this bonding, are you going after, you know, it's a full faith and credit, right? So, we'll be paying back from the future property tax revenues. Are you going for a 10-year?
We're looking at 15-year. We're looking at different options, 15, 18, and 20. And we think 15 is, is doable within the, the revenues and projections.
Okay. That does not sound unreasonable at all. And really, what's pressing on, on my mind is knowing that we have a 3F list that we also approved at the similar time. So, what we're going, going to be doing is committing a stream of revenue over a course of time, so we can get a whole lot of cash, more or less upfront, within reason, because we can only let what we can spend out in three-year, essentially, increments. But try and get those projects done. So, but we will have tapped the, the funding stream, and we'll have to pay back the interest. So, we'll have to spread the, that tax revenue over a longer course of time with those 3F projects. So, we're trying course of time with those 3F projects. So we're trying as mightily as we can, just as past boards have been, to try and get the needed transportation improvements in. But the whole reason why the MISTIP 1, 2, and 3 measures were passed by the voters was seeing that the transportation investments, the needed roads, bridges, were falling behind the need. So we have a much bigger backlog than we do the ability to dedicate and make progress on, which is why I think this bonding effort makes a lot of sense, because without it, we're going to be experiencing a lot more pain in our community, travel-wise. So thank you for making it clear. I hope we don't have to go to a longer time period than the 15-year time period. I really have appreciated the pay-as-you-go financial approach or policy with the MISTIP program and think that has been very sound. I I'll leave it at that. I'm really pleased that we took the time today to outline the kind of work that goes into working with bond counsel to prepare this and then working with the financial advisors to actually let it out into the the financing market, because there's there's work that happens, and it's important that we have the opportunity to understand all that, more or less, behind-the-scenes work that it takes to accomplish this kind of financial task. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Can I just, Chair, thank you for the opportunity, just to comment on a few threads that I heard from your board and from members of our public. This afternoon, during your board's work session, we, your board, will be presented with an update on our capital improvement plan. As a reminder, we are entering year three of the county's first-ever consolidated capital improvement plan, which includes transportation, facilities, parks, and also IT. We do know that we have many capital needs in addition to transportation, so I want to connect that to revenue options and what I heard a couple commissioners say. Bonding is an option. And on May 13, Assistant County Administrator and interim Chief Financial Officer, as well as our consultants, Marina and Company, who are well-known public finance consultants within the state, will be having a discussion with your board on revenue options, not just for operating, but also budget as we look forward. So I just want that on the record for members of the public, especially as we do enter into presentation of this this year's proposed budget on April 28. Thank you.
Yes, as as our great staff has helped me learn, we have an incredible weight of deferred maintenance that needs to be addressed so that our buildings continue to be healthy and safe for our employees and members of the community. We also need to work on an expanded jail and community correction center, and at some point may want to invest in our own secure facility for youth of our community, so they're closer to their families. And we also need to build a new courthouse and replace the very old, seismically not safe courthouse that we have across the street. So that's why it's so important that we understand these tools and what we have before us looking ahead. All righty. Well, Commissioners, I would ask for a motion to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to issue debt to finance major street transportation improvement projects known as MISTIP projects.
Second.
All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, and I think with pleasure, from all five of us. Thank you very much. Next, we have some public hearings. The first one is to legalize a portion of Northwest Turk Road as County Road 3358. Hello there, Mr. Shetler. Thank you for taking us through these.
Yes, thank you, Chair Harrington, and members of the board. I'm Stacy Shetler, County Engineer with Land Use and Transportation. And before you, we've got Turk Road legalization. And Turk Road, and the graphic doesn't show up really great there, but near US 26 is Cell Road, and there's a MISTIP Major Streets Transportation Improvement Program, 3F Bridge Replacement at that location, and that caused the survey of Turk Road to happen. And because Turk Road has been a county road since 1890, they looked at those records, and they didn't match up with the traveled way. And so the legalization process helped set the public record for where that public road is. So Turk Road, as I said, been traveled in its current location for over 100 years. It qualifies for legalization under the ORSs. A 60-foot road is recommended, the base width, and that's what was done at the in 1890 as well. And there are no permanent structures located in the proposed right-of-way. So the adjacent property owners were notified per the statute. There's no known opposition to the proposed legalization, but you may receive additional input at today's public hearing. So I ask that your board conduct the public hearing and then approve the resolution in order to legalize Northwest Turk Road. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the staff report? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to open the public hearing. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to speak with us on this?
Thank you, Chair Harrington. Would any, I did not see any member sign up in the room. Would any member please come to the front?
Come on up, ma'am.
Just.
Okay, just to sit down. I'm not used to this. My name is Mindy Hughes. I live on 19600 Northwest Turk Road, and we stand, we have most of the property on that road. We have property on both sides of the road. We would be losing a lot of property. I don't understand what the point of this is. I mean, we can get fire apparatus on both sides of the road, both ways. There's no reason for expanding the road. It's a access point for those of us that live on the road. It's not a through for regular fire apparatus or medical personnel. I mean, they can get there that way, but it's just an alternative route. I mean, it's really just used for us. And I, I mean, I would like to know, I mean, I'm not familiar with this process or anything, but I'd like to know why this is happening and how it's going to affect our land.
So thank you, ma'am, for joining us today. This is the public hearing, so what I would like to ensure is that you know that we've heard your questions and make note of those. This is a public hearing and an action to go through the legal records for the road. I believe what you're inquiring about is the nature of the MISTIP Bridge Replacement Project that Mr. Shetler spoke to.
I guess I'm not.
Ma'am, during public hearings, we take information. We need to ask at this juncture that you follow up with our staff outside of this meeting to talk further about the need for this project.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. There was another another woman who stood up. Thank you.
Bilbao, B-I-L-B-A-O. I live on Turk Road. My questions based are based on the fact of why is this happening now? Where do the source of the funds come from? To me, I'm not versed in legal jargon, but basically, a whole thing says that where the road is now is where the road is going to stay. And the 60-foot is 30 feet from the middle on each side, and that just means that that's the width of the road. It doesn't mean that the road would be paved to that width or chip sealed to that width. Those are questions. Does the road width stay the way it is currently with the shoulders being the rest of the 30-foot on each side? When I read this, it says to me that the road stays where it is, but it doesn't tell me that there's any future plans. And I don't know if that's not been developed or if it's my imagination that you're going to want to do more to it. And like Mindy Hughes said, it is a road of very little consequence to the public interest, because it runs basically parallel to Peel. Peel is paved, Turk is not. It goes nowhere. It starts from Cell and ends at Peel, so it's not a thoroughfare. It's just a side country road.
You're asking very good questions, and thank you for joining us today in your pursuit of seeking answers to those questions. I don't believe, but after I close the public hearing, I'll be asking Mr. Shetler to speak to the nature of your questions and this actual legal proceeding. So please stay tuned. Don't go anywhere, and I'm sure he can help you more after the meeting as well. Thank you.
Was there any other person in the auditorium that wish to provide comment on this public hearing? Not seeing anyone. Yep. Would any member via Zoom wish to provide public comment on this public hearing? As you've heard from staff, give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any hands. Madam Chair?
Thank you, Clerk Moss. And with that, I'd close, like to close today's public hearing. Mr. Shetler, is there anything you would like to speak to based upon what we heard during the public hearing?
So the questions I heard were, are there going to be a change? Is there going to be a change to the road? There are no plans to develop that road. There are no plans to pave that road. There's no plans to widen that road. This is only to fix the survey, which will help the residents of that area, because if there's any surveying done in the future, the road center line is set, and the roadway right-of-way does not have any discrepancies in it. The reason the survey happened was because of the bridge project. We want to be sure we're putting the bridge in our right-of-way. And so that triggered the survey of the entire road. So I believe that answers the the concerns of the the public, and thank you for the questions.
I think at a high level, it does. It gives some background, but if I was one of the property owners on the road, they may be interested in having more one-on-one time with you to understand how this project, this bridge project came to be. That's all.
Yes, and I'm happy to meet with them after this meeting in the in the back.
Any other Commissioner questions? Go ahead.
Is is the 60-foot, I mean, you're basically talking about establishing a 60-foot right-of-way from the center line, correct?
Sixty feet in total, 30 feet from the center line. Yes.
Okay, so 60 feet total. Does that represent, and I'm asking this because of what I'm picking up in some of the testimony, does that represent any kind of a taking from current property owners?
There's no taking. The 60 feet was what was established in 1890 with the original establishment of the road. So there's no no change to the width of the right-of-way being proposed with this legalization.
Okay, so the way that a layperson might summarize this is that between 1890 and now, which was a long time, records were not kept in maybe the most or updated in the way that they might be in the year 2025 or even 50 years ago. And this is needed because there's just uncertainty in the survey. Is that how you would characterize this?
That's that's correct, Commissioner. So when the survey crew went out there to retrace the the survey from 1890, their road notes, and we have those road notes, and they used those road notes to reestablish where the lines are, and there was a mismatch, and so the math didn't work out. So these are basically a correction of the math in that survey.
Okay, thank you.
The actual road that people have been traveling versus what the 1990s records indicated. 1890, yes. Did I get that right?
Yeah, that's correct, Chair. I don't think the road deviated, has deviated much. It's still within the same right-of-way. And so really, there's no change.
But we're updating those records to current standards.
Correct.
Okay. Any other board questions? Okay, the public hearing has been closed. Next, I would ask for a motion to approve the resolution in order legalizing Northwest Turk Road as a county road. And and the legalization will become final upon the filing of the proposed record of survey in the county surveyor's office. We have, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. We have another one similar but different. This is a public hearing to vacate portions of County Road 77 and County Road 71. Mr. Shetler?
Thank you, Chair Harrington, members of the board. Again, I'm Stacy Shetler, County Engineer, and we're here to talk about a vacation of County Road 77 and 71. So we get back in our Wayback Machine, back to the 1800s again, 1880 this time. And again, the graphic doesn't show up well on the screen, but hopefully in your packet, you can see the location of this. This is south of Forest Grove and east of Oregon Route 47.
It shows up better on our monitors.
That's great. These roads, as I said, were established in 1880, and the and the roads to be vacated are the ones highlighted in red. There's no evidence of these have ever been used for travel, so these are basically paper roads on a survey. The properties that that in the area, they all have legal access by recorded private access and utility easements. I feel that there are no, there's no public need for these roads, and by doing this vacation, it removes any unnecessary encumbrances on the property owners. So the adjacent property owners were notified per statute. There's no known opposition to the proposed road vacation. Several property owners have reached out in support of the vacation, and you may receive additional input from today's public hearing. That concludes the presentation. Thank you.
So at this juncture, I'd like to open a public hearing. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone?
I did not see anyone sign up in the back before the meeting. Would any member in the auditorium wish to provide public comment to this public hearing? As you've heard the staff report, give a moment, raise your hand, start coming forward. Not seeing any in the room. Would any member online wish to provide public comment to this public hearing? And give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any hands. Chair Harrington.
Thank you. And with that, I'll close the public hearing, and my apologies to my colleagues. I neglected to see if any of you had questions before I opened the public hearing, but thank you very much. I see no further questions. So do we have a motion to approve the resolution in order vacating the portions of County Road 77 and County Road 71 as described in the vacation report?
Second.
All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. That brings us to the second public comment period of today's meeting. This is an opportunity for members of our community to come and address the board for up to five minutes an individual, 30 minutes maximum. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to do so?
We do, Madam Chair. We have Bob Terry, followed by Jill Latre.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. My name is Jill Latre, and I'm a resident of Washington County. Today, I will continue to read from the executive order entitled, Preserving and Protecting Preserving and Protecting the Integrity of American Elections Signed by President on March 25, 2025. Enforcing the Citizen Requirement for Federal Elections. To enforce the federal prohibition on foreign nationals voting in federal elections, within 30 days of the date of this order, the Election Assistance Commission shall take appropriate action to require in its national mail voter registration form documentary proof of U.S. citizenship, state or local official to record on the form the type of document that the applicant presented as documentary proof of U.S. citizenship, including the date of the document's issuance, the date of the document's expiration, if any, the office that issued the document, and any unique identification number associated with the document, while taking appropriate measures to ensure information security. Documentary proof of United States citizenship shall include a copy of a U.S. passport, an identification document compliant with the requirements of the Real ID Act of 2005 that indicates that the applicant is a citizen of the United States, an official identification card that indicates the applicant is a citizen of the United States, a valid federal or state government-issued photo ID if such ID indicates that the applicant is a U.S. citizen or if such ID is otherwise accompanied by proof of U.S. citizenship. To identify unqualified voters registered in the United States, the Secretary of Homeland Security shall, consistent with applicable law, ensure that state and local officials have, without requirement of the payment of a fee, access to appropriate systems for verifying the citizenship or immigration status of individuals registering to vote or who are already registered. The Secretary of State shall take all lawful and appropriate action to make available information from relevant databases to state and local election officials engaged in verifying the citizenship of individuals registering to vote or who are already registered. The Department of Homeland Security, in coordination with the DOGE Administrator, shall review each state's publicly available voter registration list and available records concerning voter list maintenance activities as required, alongside federal immigration databases and state records requested, including through subpoena where necessary and authorized by law for consistency with federal requirements. Within 90 days of the date of this order, the Secretary of Homeland Security shall, consistent with applicable law, provide to the Attorney General complete information on all foreign nationals who have indicated on any immigration form that they have registered or voted in a federal, state, or local election. And shall also take all appropriate action to submit to relevant state or local officials such information. The head of each federal voter registration executive department or agency under the National Voter Registration Act shall assess citizenship prior to providing a federal voter registration form to enrollees of public assistance programs. The Attorney General shall prioritize enforcement of 18 USC Code 611 and 1015, similar laws that restrict non-citizens from registering to vote or voting, including through the use of databases or information maintained by the Department of Homeland Security, state-issued identification records, and driver's license databases, and similar records relating to citizenship. The Attorney General shall, consistent with applicable laws, coordinate with state attorneys general to assist with state-level review and prosecution of aliens unlawfully registered to vote or casting votes. The right of American citizens to have their votes properly counted and tabulated without illegal dilution is vital to determining the rightful winner of an election. Citizens urge Washington County to implement and enforce the citizenship requirement to be registered and to vote in elections. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Latre. Mr. Terry.
Good morning, commissioners. I apologize, but I would off-lap my hearing aids this morning. So things are a little difficult for me to communicate. Somebody told me this morning in the audience, "We can hear you, Bob, but you can't hear yourself." And they're absolutely correct. Unfortunately, that is a result of my military duty. But nonetheless, this morning, I want to talk to you if you have a few things I've decided, if you'd allow. I'm going to cut, much probably to the decree of my fellow elected county citizens, community citizens here. I'd like to discuss a little bit about what we normally come to talk to you about. Then I'd like to discuss a little bit about what's going on here in the county and some of the things I did observe and could hear but could read this morning. But first of all, I'm a little concerned about since October, we have made you, the board, or those who set the commission's direction, have changed the directions to how we approach you, speak to you, and follow your directions in the public hearings. Some of those changes have been made, all of them have been made, not to the benefit of the public, but to the benefit of you all and to the administration here. Some are unfair. This board and administration has proclaimed itself to be somebody who is more spoken and be more adhering to what the public has to say and be in more open view for the public to see what you're doing. These four changes that you've made and then one recently this week does not adhere to that. It cuts us out more and makes it more difficult for us to do what we want to do as community citizens of this grassroots community right here in our county where we live. Our county is more important in many ways in what you all do here than even it is done in Washington, D.C., and certainly more than it has done in Salem. This is our grassroots. We live with you. You do legislate here, as you well know, as I do. It may be the same type of legislation we see in the federal and the state governments, but we do legislate. That concerns us that we've been cut out in some degree. The other thing is, you're very targeted to us. And it's just, you know, not intuitive to what our community should be about and our leadership in the community should be. You know, it has been stated that this is a learning organization. I want to believe that. We want to believe that. But we haven't heard anything but excuses, but we've been trying to present to you as to why you can't do it and trying behind the Secretary of State. We disagree with you strongly, and so do some legal authorities that we have approached and listened to as to how our home rule works in conjunction with our Constitution. Yes, there has been, not legislative, but ordinances and also state statutes that haven't been challenged in courts that don't comply with many of us. And we're not going to take it to the Constitution. That's going to be done by the government, the federal government, coming shortly. And you will feel it. And I hope you feel it hard because you've ignored a lot of what we've suggested to you. Beyond that, what I heard this morning, I just asked you to go to realize that MSTIP has been one of the stars of this county. When Measure 48, 49, and 50 came along and melded MSTIP program into the general budget by statute, by legislated statute, we changed it then here in the county. Now, back in the days when I worked with Charlie Cameron and Bonnie Hayes and everybody in between, all the way up to where we are currently today, we lived by things like Peter Drucker's rules. And we understood the understanding of what our institution, our history was about, that is seeming to be ignored today to a very large degree. We need to go back to those days of what we learned in our institutional, which melded FASB and GASB together. Now, I know Jerry understands that. I'm not sure everybody else does. But we understand how FASB and GASB melded together to make our country work and make our county work the way it should. That is not taking place today. MSTIP is being destroyed. The way the rules were on MSTIP was we had to follow by the bonds that we put forth. We've lost that. We are so far behind right now. And MSTIP that was passed by this board, not this board, but the board at the time, back in 2018 and before, that's not happening today. Our roads are a shamble. We used to be the pride of the three-county metropolitan area. I encourage you to move away, and thank you for the time, to move away from metro. Metro is a conglomeration of the money. And just us, just knows how to gather our money and spend it. Thank you, Commissioner Carrington.
All right, next, Madam Chair, we have Karen Schmidlin.
Good morning, Madam Chair and commissioners. I'm Karen Schmidlin, Washington County resident for over 40 years. Today, I'd like to point out an item from last week's news. This was covered on many different news outlets, although I can't say that I saw it here locally. But it was part of the president's cabinet meeting, which was televised. And so I'm quoting from Zero Hedge article on Friday, April 11, 2025. National Intelligence Director Tulsi Gabbard made a startling revelation during an open cabinet meeting Wednesday, announcing that she has evidence that the electronic voting machines have been tampered with to manipulate the results of past elections. Quote, "I've got a long list of things that we're investigating. We have the best going after this, election integrity being one of them," Gabbard stated. Quote, "We have evidence of how these electronic voting systems have been vulnerable to hackers for a very long time," unquote, she continued. Gabbard emphasized that the evidence shows that machines are, quote, "vulnerable to exploitation to manipulate the results of the votes being cast," unquote. She told President Trump that the finding, quote, "further drives forward your mandate to bring about paper ballots across the country so that voters can have faith in the integrity of our elections," unquote. So I'm here to say that if the National Intelligence Director is saying that she has evidence, this is real. The machines are vulnerable, and that means that as voters who can no longer trust the system, we are all disenfranchised. It doesn't matter how many times or how many ways our county elections office and the Oregon Secretary of State tell us that it's safe and secure. The fact is that it's not. There is a proven alternative used by, as I mentioned before, the whole frickin' world, at least the vast majority, who have not been deceived by slick machine salesmen telling them that they are completely secure. Paper ballots hand-counted with proof of citizenship and identity. That's the only way that is actually safe and secure. Please bring Washington County back to this method that has withstood the test of time and cannot be hacked. And I appreciate your service and your attention this morning. Thank you.
Is there any other member in the auditorium that wish to provide comment that hasn't already spoken today on the topic? So not seeing any addition in the room. Would any member online via Zoom wish to provide public comment on any kind of other topic? Give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any additional hands. Chair Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. We'll move on to board announcements. We have the following meetings coming up. Next Tuesday, April 22, we'll have work sessions starting at 2:00 in the afternoon and a board meeting that starts in the evening at 6:30. On Friday, the 25th, the Board of Commissioners will be joining others for a tour of the county courthouse. On Monday, April 28, we're having a big budget committee's sets of meetings to hear Ms. Angie's proposed budget for the next fiscal year. Fiscal year 2025, 2026 starts right here at 6:00 p.m. I hope you'll join us. It will also be broadcast on YouTube. On Tuesday, May 6, we'll start our work session at 9:00 a.m. Pause that for the Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting at 10:00. Then the board meeting will immediately follow that, maybe at around 10:15 or so. On Friday, May 9, wearing our Clean Water Services Board of Directors hat, we will join the other members of the CWS Budget Committee meeting right here in this room at 9:00 a.m., likely till about 4:00, for a full day of informative presentations for the fiscal year '26 proposed budget. The following week, May 12, we'll have a Budget Community Forum starting at 5:30. That's on Monday, May 12, regarding the proposed budget. On Tuesday, May 13, we'll have a work session day starting at 9:00 a.m. Then the following two days, Wednesday, May 14, and Thursday, May 15, we're going to be holding the Washington County Budget Committee meeting. That's the County Budget and Service District for lighting, number one. Those meetings will be right here in this room, starting at 9:00 a.m., likely to be very full days till about 5:00 p.m. And it's really great information, and we hope you'll join us. Are there any other board announcements today? Yes, Chair Harrington, I'd like to announce a reminder that on April 24 is our volunteer appreciation event. Yes, that's right. Next Thursday, I believe it's over at Wingspan. Or is it at the Washington Street Center?
Correct, it is at Wingspan. This is an opportunity for us to celebrate the many Board and Commission, Board and Commission volunteers and volunteers who help support county service delivery. I just recently looked up a statistic that the value of each hour of a volunteer is $33 per hour. So it really is an extension of our service, and it is a great opportunity to recognize those volunteers.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that.
And don't forget, it's April 15. File your taxes today.
Or get an extension. Terrific. I believe that's it for our meeting today. And we will be reconvening in work session at 1:00 p.m. Do we have a motion to adjourn this meeting? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Thank you.